Hello my loves and welcome back to Simply Bria Bria. It's your girl Bria here y'all and I'm back with another vlog for you guys. So yeah, today's like beginning of September and um it's like 4 o'clock now. But I just thought I'd open up the vlog cuz I'm about to go work out and I will try to bring you guys along. The only thing y'all like people be, it be a lot of people in the wreck and everybody just being, you know, looking everywhere else. So it may be awkward but I'mma try to get some vlog footage for you guys. But yeah, um, excuse me, sorry if y'all hear the washer and stuff. Today's been pretty productive so far, like I cooked earlier, I've cleaned, went to the grocery store, now I'm washing clothes and stuff. So yeah, it's been pretty productive, but I, yeah, like I said, I'm taking you guys along to the gym. This weekend is gonna be lit y'all, it's gonna be a lit weekend vlog, baby, college edition, okay? So yeah, we're supposed to be going out and just turning up, seeing friends that I haven't saw in a while. So yeah, tonight we're going out, baby, we're going out. Okay, and it's Labor Day weekend, we're going up every day of the week, okay, every day of the weekend. So yeah, I need to go get this done though cuz baby, I gotta be snatched, so that's what we're about to go do. But first I need to go run to the office, hold on y'all. Here we go. Yeah, I need to run to the office and pick up something, but also like y'all, I placed an order from my outfit online and my package is supposed to come not until 7:00 PM, so I'm like, I hope I can get it because I don't know if the office is gonna be open, but they may just deliver it to us, I don't know. But yeah, like I said, I'll check in with you guys once I get to the gym. Alright y'all, so I'm done with my little, let me hold this, I'm done with my little workout. It was leg day, um, you know, it was pretty good, it was alright, I guess. If I rate it like a seven, I don't know, I just feel like I might have to really start going up on the weight and really like pushing myself. But at first like my mentality was like, you know, I'm just getting back in the gym, so I don't wanna just like over, overdo it um, when I'm just coming back, but I think I am gonna have to like start upping the weight and just like, like I said, pushing myself. Period. And China just said she going out with us, I mean, you know what that mean to me, man, I mean. Y'all can't talk. But yeah, China said she going out with us, so we got China to go out, baby, we gonna have a good night. But yeah, so it was a pretty decent workout, I would say. Now I'm about to go home, take a shower, shave my legs, exfoliate, I really don't need to exfoliate cuz I just did. Um, what was I gonna say? What was I gonna say? Oh yeah, shower, shave, and wash my hair. So yeah, I'll catch you guys when I get to the crib. Okay y'all, it's a little bit later in the day and I'm just about to um start getting ready in a little bit. But let me talk to y'all right now and setting. But yeah, y'all, I'm about to start uh getting ready, I gotta finish making up my bed first, but um, that's what I'm about to do. So I washed my hair and everything, um, I need to throw on these lashes and do my eyebrows and then I'mma go pick up these photos that I got from Walgreens for that wall over there as you guys can see. And yeah, just stay tuned y'all for the room tour cuz I think, I really love my room, it's very pretty and I just like the theme of it. So I can't wait to show you guys. But yeah, so I have to go run to Walgreens and then, yeah, just get dressed and stuff. I have a few options for clothing tonight, so I'mma let y'all see what y'all think, which one I should wear. Cuz we're just going to like a lounge and maybe like a club or something, I don't really know, but yeah, so stay tuned. And y'all didn't tell me I had food in my mouth earlier, food in my teeth, like come on. But it is what it is, I always do, period. Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to check in with y'all, I guess y'all can watch me make the bed if y'all want. Cuz I can't stand coming home and stuff not ready, and stuff not good. Okay guys, so you girls all ready, I just have on this little dress, I got this one from Blushmark. Makeup, Zom baby face is cute, okay? I'mma put my hair down of course, I just tied it up. I'm just wearing these sandals that I have from Fashion Nova, they're always where, the clear ones. Don't leave too close at the toes though. And I bought my heels just in case, my clear heels as well from Fashion Nova, just in case I throw those on, but yeah, I'm feeling the fit of it, it's giving. Uh, and I just put this little necklace on, I think I got it from Shein. And then my watch, and yes, I do match silver with gold, baby, it doesn't even matter. And then my little pearls, cuz that's always a go. But yeah, I'm really excited. She's giving. Y'all feel like I have not got dressed and like did my makeup in a few weeks, so yeah. I'm excited. But yeah, I just wanted to update you guys, we're about to head out probably soon. Blow that candle out. Zom Zul, that Zom Zul, Zom Zul, Zerazon Zul. And she's out. Hello you guys, it's definitely the next day and it's definitely almost 2 o'clock PM. Y'all, last night was fun, it was fun, I'mma insert clips, or I would have already inserted clips by now. But yeah, it was really fun, um, y'all, look at the weather, y'all know what I'm saying, look at the weather. Baby, we outside today, tomorrow, and Monday, okay, we outside. But no, yeah, y'all, last night was really fun, we ended up going to Crew, if you're in the Austin area, Crew is like the lounge. It was a good little vibes, it started off slow at first, but it was good vibes, it was really good vibes. Cute little place, kinda small but cute spot, and then we went to um Rio, Rio was lit. And after that, we just kinda, I don't know, like the last 20 minutes or so, we just was kinda like going other places. But um, yeah, Rio was, Rio was a good vibe, it was. And I'm actually going back to Rio today for a pool party, so that should be fun. Um, but that's not until like, well, I guess, in like 3 hours, I gotta be ready, so. Yeah, I just been chilling so far, baby, cuz I was tired, y'all, I was exhausted, I did not wake up until like 12:00 PM. So yeah, I was exhausted, so um, I was gonna try to do a little homework or like read my chapters, but I'm thinking I'mma do that tomorrow or Monday. Cuz Monday, I don't have really anything planned for sure, but I may go ahead and do it tomorrow after church, we'll see. Um, but today I'mma just kinda clean up, get my life together, organize some stuff. Um, I'm actually gonna go to Walgreens today because I did not do it yesterday, y'all, like time kinda snuck up on me, baby, I thought I had more time than I did. So yeah, I'mma show you guys I'm wearing some pool party, it's a swimsuit I wore before. I don't know if I vlogged and I wore it, but it's from Icon Swim. And then, yeah, I'mma wear a little cover up, but I gotta see which one I like the best. So yeah, that's the plan for today, baby, pool party, and then after that, we're going to a regular party, and then after that, we're going to the square. This is the weekend, this is a um, a true weekend in the life of a college student. Cuz baby, look, this is my mindset, y'all, this is not my set. Working really taught me that, baby, live it up while you can because you're gonna be working. Most, majority of us are gonna be working for a long time. So baby, in these next 2 years or so, really not even 2 years, I only got 1 more year. In this next year or so, I wanna really just have fun and like, just live life. You know what I'm saying? So yeah, that's how I'm like, yeah, I'mma go out, I'mma wear my little outfits, I need to order some more outfits because... Am I going out pieces? I think my style has changed a little bit. While I'm talking about, let me get on Blushmark right now. Cuz y'all, Blushmark be coming through with the pieces, and especially if you're only gonna wear it like 2 or 3 times, why spend $30 when you can spend $6, like, let me get on there right now, baby, because... And they have it 30% off, that's my type of thing. Shein is cool too, Shein, I do like Shein. Some of you gotta watch though cuz it could look cheap. Like this one, this is cute. Can't see that, it's cute, but I feel like it could look cheap, and that one doesn't have reviews, so I'm like eh. Yeah, we're supposed to be going out after the pool party, and today's our first football game, but I'm not gonna go. But I'm kinda wondering like dang shit, I went tailgating, but eh, I don't really know nobody out there, so. Yeah, but okay, y'all, I've been talking for 6 minutes, baby, let me talk to y'all later, I'll check in with you guys when I'm doing something more entertaining, okay? I don't know if y'all can hear me, but I'm trying to reteach chapters or whatever, y'all, and it's just no energy, it's giving no energy. That was cute. If I had to do math to this, I'mma show all my team. Alright y'all, so I'm about to head to the, um, it is so hot. Ooh, Texas don't play, but I'm about to head to Walgreens and I think I am gonna just fill up a little bit more, like I pretty much have a good amount of gas, but might as well go ahead and fill up, just so give me a full. And I may run my car through the car wash, honestly, cuz uh, it can use it, not gonna hold you. It can use it for sure. And it's not supposed to rain until like next week, next Monday, today's, what's today, Saturday? So I should have time. But yeah, I just wanted to update y'all and we're about to head out, I'mma take y'all along, and we're gonna be set. Let's go, and get it, and get it, and go. We can't listen to the car, do we, girl? What's that thing?
I know it's all there, I don't got a little bag at me.
Okay y'all, so I picked up the photos, it's really quick and easy. I only have like 11 or 10 to 11 prints, and they were like still 50% off. Period. Oh, it cut off my head in this one. This one is so cute, that was my grad picture. I think this time I graduate, when I graduate there, I wanna do grad photos at nighttime. And when I put this one of me and my cousins, y'all, we were in Cali, that was so much fun. Look at this, y'all, we were scared for our life, but Paris Hilton is really fun though. But y'all, we was all, my little legs is like that. Oh, and then I just did a picture of me, cuz I love me. Well, there goes some more of me, it's mainly me, it's not really as much family. Look at this, y'all, do you see the body? Do you see it? Stop playing with her. And then this is the one I did for my birthday. All of these are for my birthday, that one is for my birthday, this one's for my birthday. And then this one was the pictures that I took with Cam. So cute, so cute, and then this was on the boat. It cut off my head in this one too, but it is what it is. So yeah, leather print, so that was cute. I can't wait to put these up in my room on that little grass wall, which I may show y'all, but if not, then stay tuned for the um, the room tour and the apartment tour. Cuz baby, I'm snapping on this apartment, okay, call me HGTV cuz I'mma make it happen, I'm going to make it happen. But yeah, so I was not gonna go to the car wash, y'all, but that car wash said $10 and I'm used to paying 6. So I think I'mma skip. Plus, it's too hot and I really need a vac, goes in a rocking vacuum on my car, so I think I'mma just wrap it on up for tonight and go on back to the crib, okay? Trying to think which way, that's the quickest way to get out. It's a football game, I think I told y'all, it's a football game today, we're playing Texas State versus Baylor, so it's kind of like a lot of traffic in San Marcos, not a lot of traffic, but it's more people, they come in and tailgate or whatever. And Baylor's a big school, it's a big school, you know? But I'mma probably check in with y'all in a minute because I'mma have to make my way on my humanity and stuff. So yeah, this bathing suit that I'm wearing with this little cover up, and then I'm just gonna carry my little yellow purse to bring out some of the yellow in the bathing suit. But yeah, and then I just have on, oops, these little sandals that I showed you guys I got from Target, and my little toes, I tried to do my best. So yeah, that's the look. It's giving flaws, period. Hey guys, am I camera crooked? Y'all, I was supposed to be just vlogging my lit weekend this past weekend, and y'all, I was not vlogging very much, I'm just gonna go ahead and say it. But hey, today is now Thursday the night, and yeah, I'm coming back because now I gotta vlog another weekend. But I feel like this week is gonna be more chill, I'm not gonna be as outside, I mean, I'm not gonna be outside as much. Yeah, my little wall back there looks so cute, getting into it. So yeah, literally, in the first part of this vlog, I checked in with y'all, it was like I'm going and got my photos from Walgreens to put in there. Um, so we might as well go ahead and do that, I'm waiting on Tory to get out of class because we're gonna go to the beat supply store. But in the meantime, in between time, baby, I'mma go ahead and do that, and then I need to go eat me some noodles cuz I'm kinda hungry. I have meal preps and leftovers, but I don't wanna do that, so, yeah. But I just thought I'd check in with you guys and update y'all. I am so sorry that I did not vlog more this weekend, y'all, cuz it was so much fun, but I was just like, I was so tired, y'all, it was too much moving around. Like literally, we went out Friday, Saturday, almost the whole day, cuz we went to a pool party, dinner, regular, like turn up at night. And then Sunday, oh, we went to this day party, which you know, day party be like all day tonight. Oh we went to this day party which you know day party be like all day to nighttime and I went to church on Sunday so it was it was a lot Um yeah like all I could do Monday was sleep and half study like I was just exhausted But yeah this weekend we don't plan on doing much tomorrow I'm gonna be filming a video with the gang I'm probably gonna film this my outfit online video uh unpackaging I mean um Like showing my new items as well as like how to style it so that's probably in the plan for tomorrow And then I just have to like clean and like go to grocery store stuff like that So yeah not much planned and then school of course I have to study for like two tests Um I have an exit exam for our accounting program And so I'm gonna try to go ahead and take that now so If you're looking at going into Texas State um accounting program definitely Don't forget you have to take uh exit exams If you have not already passed one section of the CPA Um so I'm not gonna be able to do that before I graduate so I need to go ahead and take The exit exam and try to get at least one out the way while I can But yeah that's the plan for this weekend kind of a lot to do but we're gonna make it happen baby So yeah I'mma just speed this clip up and we're gonna get into it okay 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 y'all so I couldn't figure out how to get the pictures to stay and I don't even know if I like this but basically I just like took the pictures like behind the flowers but like mm I don't know I feel like I like the vision but there's something missing I definitely need to move one of those but mm Now let me know what y'all think I kinda like the overall aesthetic and I wonder how to look if I like bend behind this little spot Are y'all getting the vision I've been right here May add a little extra spice but yeah so who is baby uh Y'all is blowing up my phone But yeah that's the vision behind it So that's all I got but I really like I said I'm really hungry So yeah let me put this up Real quick Y'all say hey to Tori
Don't look at me I look bad
Say hey
Did I do this the wrong way oh I did
Oh and also okay I didn't I'm just telling you like you can't turn it off So like you just hold this down
Oh yeah I know
Oh you just turn it off okay
Is it this way Did I do it right
Why is that why turn it off
Don't worry about it but no one
I wanna show you that I can turn it off
Yes but you're real look I do
I really don't remember which way it goes I don't know if it goes that way or goes everywhere
Don't worry about it
No like I don't know I don't know if it matters honestly
Okay
Cuz I think it'll still fit Maybe it doesn't I think you do have to
It's supposed to click yeah Wait I forgot your table's right there
Got to stand up Why did you real quick why are you in class
I was supposed to be out of class I got out at five fifty
What time is it Tori
It's five forty-six
And China you know China's not gonna be ready
No China's really on time I mean I'm not gonna have that door but China's coming out
China's never on time Tori this is gonna take me ten minutes to eat
You could be a turkey I didn't consider your time
Six minutes Tori six minutes and um you're gonna be out of class this only takes eight minutes to cook and it takes me two minutes to eat
I'm trying to reconsider
So we're gonna leave
Look at you making a mess
Why would they do that No Tori it doesn't take that long at the B supply store Don't be rolling your eyes at the professor I'll meet me so I can tell her The last time oop I gotta live in your own charger The counter's clean right
Yes Ish it's clean
They already hit it it'll cook the germs out It will cook the germs they didn't even see nothing I was doing How much water did it take me Now my noodles wasting
What did you do
I didn't do nothing I put too much water in it Oh you thought I meant like I dropped them
Yeah
I would have been so devastated
I don't see China time
China is not gonna be on time This is how the noodles look y'all I feel like I put a little too much water in it but They hit they hit So yeah try that I don't use the whole packet seasoning though because it be making my stomach hurt because it's so spicy So I just do like half the pack I'm a thug but I'm not like a real real thug No I'mma try that bye y'all Y'all say oh they don't need to know where we stay Tori where your card Bro Y'all say hey to China This is what China's giving
You better not
This is what she's giving today uh Tori too It's giving sunshine it's giving lift oh my god y'all see how she's she's acting so crazy The door is not open China stop freaking hitting the door China I need you to raise it up
Oh my god
I'm your child You don't never know it no it's the other one
Why didn't you do it
Okay look at my head look at my
There we go
See now he's taking it out of Tori's car this is just a lot
I love Tori's car
Oh be careful there's like a pocket knife over this Who's she trying to stab Look beep beep Y'all we about to go to the B supply store
To the what
Tori stop do ow ooh that bird oh gosh Tori She lied She put the lid at the quarter to ten it was a long journey but we're here I feel like I got a foot on my pants But yeah it's hot
Oh I ordered a wig my first like
Oh yeah bundles All the wigs in your home
Oh hairbrush oh
I need to send J Lo she asked me did I know a biter
Oh send her a brazer braze
She I don't know if she's still here I was gonna do the canned one Oh but I forgot to I was in there filming with Malik I should ask Malik if he wasn't
I was not
Oh it was good they they kept winning
Did you just go just because
I I was at the rec and when I was rocking in he was rocking in and he was like oh like I feel like I'll come watch uh Come watch us play volleyball and I was like bet I'll be over there Tori cream and nature's not good No don't use cream and no I'm kidding Yeah I just wanted some lashes out of here Sorry did I hit you
No
No Tori I'm waiting for you Tori it's okay
I gotta crap up my leg and it hurts Why is that so funny
I caught a cream one time though when I was asleep
When yes it was one of those
So y'all was a ladybug on me Is that good luck Tori don't step on it I think it's like right there where um
No that's not it I ordered some pattern hairs beauty Kohlhaub oil
Kohlhaub
Kohlhaub
Kohlhaub I think that's how you say it I forget how it's pronounced they have it here I think Oh yeah Tori's gonna be a while over there so I'm just gonna grab my lashes Uh-uh Tori uh-uh
Probably looking at the blades
You gonna hit that yellow one
I just might
Don't do it I know I get it Okay y'all these are the ones I get I get the red color I usually get these No what I usually get forty-two I like forty Can you see that forty Forty-three is cute I think I don't like forty is I thought Forty thirty-three and then I wanna get maybe one more Thirty-five is kinda short but thirty-six is kinda long Okay hey y'all um it's a little bit later in the evening so after I came from like the B supply store and everything I ended up going to choir rehearsal so yeah that was over and now it's about Now it's like ten something and y'all let me show y'all So I got this air fryer I think I showed you all this in a video that brand And I just popped some little wings in there y'all I popped some wings and some fries in there and these are just the Tyson wings Chicken wings and then just some fries and I popped them in there It didn't even go the full fifteen minutes so probably like twelve minutes y'all and they are so good they're like better than um They're like better than Wingstop so yeah I'm about to like smack on this and then I got some ranch Cuz y'all I forgot to mention I'm going to China's house which she live like right down the street from me And we're gonna um just have like a little movie night and study a little bit so that's where I'm about to head to now So I'm just gonna bring my little wings and fries and my little ranch ready and head over there I just have stuff everywhere Yeah I just have stuff everywhere but I'm trying to see how China ain't gonna rent your house like girl Stop stop the games though so yeah that's where I'm about to head to now I'm gonna see if I can carry all of this Cuz we gotta get it I'm not leaving nothing so we gotta get it baby even if I have to put a ridge in a backpack I'm gonna make it happen for sure I think this is all I need actually so yeah Let's head over to China's and have girls on movie nights okay I'mma see y'all oop not a blink bye y'all And y'all are gonna be on the vlog today oh yeah I need to ask the China you sitting here I gotta ask the the vlog the questions not the vlog my Instagram What is he talking about This is my guy Tori you ready
I'm gonna put it in the oven
Oh turn it in there Now she already threw it in the oven So I'm gonna like put your in a paper plate by chance
I don't have paper plates
She's too fancy for a burger
I know
No cuz if I don't eat it all I don't want the ketchup to be over the chicken wings
Or we have like a little sauce dish
I don't wanna like extra sauce Oh I could have brought the one I took for fifty-four We had so many I told you I said give me some of those too Okay y'all the questions for the video I never asked them yet so I guess you can Oh you really watching it Um so making more money than a spouse so basically I'm gonna ask would you uh would you Not would you How would I say this basically like if your partner making less than you a deal breaker But is that if you is that the right term
Making a different amount at first like making more or less
Yes Oh okay cuz I really I'm thinking less but more I get what you're saying
But it depends on how much though so
Yeah but I kinda I think I may give them a chance to answer and explain yeah And when I do that I can put it on the same picture right No this is perfect thank you dear
And the ketchup too
Yes oh Chinese so sweet He's so sweet I didn't wanna bring the ketchup and the ranch I didn't know that's overdoing it
Not really
Okay I could have brought it next time um
I'm glad you're enjoying it China Dude I haven't had it in so long it's actually pretty good
A little blue stuff
He's better when it's free
Look all the time So would your spouse would your partner How can I say that if y'all in a different tax bracket basically cut to it y'all in a different tax bracket is that cool Would you date somebody in a different tax bracket I don't know why
Why rather than why don't you just keep it
Cuz the tax bracket gives them a like about how much difference if you're in a different tax bracket that's like a different lifestyle
Yeah
And then I might give the question so let me jot these let me huh
That's a good yeah tax bracket
I think that would be yeah would you date And should I say date or should I say would you um just like a partner
Cuz I feel like date is different than like seeing someone
These days yeah
What's the price tax bracket difference what is that is that still the question with the tax bracket
Yeah but is it
I feel like it was based on everything other like as in like somebody you're about to marry Dating is different
So what's the term would you
Marry Would you marry somebody
Some people don't even believe in marriage so would you be with someone Or would you be in a relationship
But then again
I would hope they would take that serious like dang what do you take serious Okay are you and then I'll be like are you here for the streets or a relationship Is that a bad question I would just really say streets or Relationship Y'all huh what are you gonna say Girl you're good
I was gonna say is that one that you have to charge or like you have batteries
Batteries yeah Y'all China said I was a shit y'all those wings are really good air fryer less than fifteen minutes save your coins sis do it yourself Look at that boom You know I do live a little the gristle I do live a little the gristle some people don't leave the gristle but I leave a little bit because Baby that's enough Now Tori put on the same movie I just saw
Old movie or a movie
You never
Wait about how I what is this
This is Love Don't Cost a Thing
No I've never seen this
That is a shame China
What's it about
Like This boy is lame and then he get with this girl that's popular and then he switch up and turn on her you know just what he was doing Like this is what they do They forget where they came from
This is an origin story
But I can't believe you must have not been a BET watcher
I didn't watch some BET stuff
Really this is a BET classic right this is BET Tori This is BET I got you bye y'all I just wanted to show you how my bones and how good they were I got you, bye y'all, I just wanted to show you how my bones and how good they were. Good morning, guys. So today's the next day, it's like ten something. As you guys saw, I just got done like cooking breakfast and cleaning up. Threw my sheets in the wash, so now I'm about to, um, start studying. I have to finish these homework problems for accounting class. And then at like twelve o'clock, so in about an hour and a half, I'm gonna go to campus with like a study group, and we're supposed to be like studying and stuff. But I'mma just wait till twelve to go on campus, because y'all, Texas State, they be charging, or not charging, but like you can't park there before twelve. So I'mma just wait till after twelve, cause I don't wanna risk a ticket. So yeah, basically the goal for today, I have a whole to-do list. Ooh, y'all, it be, we're not, and I'm playing, y'all see me? But yeah, um, so I need to study for my accounting exam, I need to do my accounting homework, or like accounting quiz. That's due on like Tuesday, today's Friday, by the way, so time to head. I need to, um, study for my audit exam, the exit exam that I was telling you. I need to check on my job, and I need to apply to this PhD program. So it's a pretty intense day, hopefully I can get like all of it done. I've already prayed about it, so I'm speaking it to existence that it's gonna get done, okay? Plus more, that was my prayer, Lord, help me to be productive, help me to get everything done on my to-do list, plus more. So we're gonna make that happen. So first, I'm gonna start with the homework. But yeah, I just wanted to update you guys, I may take you guys along the campus, just so you can kinda see like what, what it looks like in our life, in my life, but, um, we shall see. And then later on today, mind you, I have to be done with all of this by like six thirty, cause I wanna go to the volleyball game really bad. It's like one of the first home games of the season, well, they have one today at eleven, and then the next one's at six thirty. So I was like, maybe I can catch it six thirty one. And then after that, me and the gang are gonna be filming a video today, so that should be fun. And then I really need to film another video, the my outfit online video. So yeah, it's kind of a packed day. I do still have tomorrow, but tomorrow I'm going to this conference, um, for my church. Um, and then after that, I don't know, I'll probably be studying some more. But yeah, it's a pretty packed day, I just wanted to update you guys, check in, so yeah, um, y'all can watch me study if y'all want to, but I- Okay guys, so it's a little bit after twelve, it's like twelve fifteen. I'm supposed to be at the library right now, but then China, y'all, y'all know China, she gonna text me. Literally, right before I was about to walk out, so probably like one forty-five, she texts me, was like, oh, I'll come with you. So I'm waiting on her to get ready real quick. But in the meantime, I was just making my bed, cause I washed my sheets and everything. So I was like, might as well be productive and, um, make my bed and just kinda clean up a little bit and get ready. So I thought I might as well unbox my, my outfit online package that I had. Um, I'm gonna do a video with this later, so I kinda wanna like lay out the pieces and see what I can see myself wearing it with. Um, so yeah, that's what I'm about to do right now. Cause it's a busy day, baby, we got work to do, okay? We have work to do. But yeah, this is how it comes. Oh, the packaging's so cute. Actually, let me, um, let me record this, so I can insert a clip in the video as well. I'm gonna do. Cause y'all, I'm really trying to step up this YouTube thing, like, I feel like it's so hard, man, to do YouTube and go to school, cause like all your free time is studying and the free time that you do have, you know, you don't wanna be like sitting and editing all day, it's just so wild, but. But yeah, their packaging, y'all, is like A1 sauce, okay, it is so nice. But yeah, so China says she's ready, so I'll catch up with, with you guys when, um, I get to the library. Now y'all looking at my little messages, not your faces. Act like you didn't say it. This is a study game, y'all, we have to make it happen. Shout out to Texas State for the-
If we gonna pass, we gonna pass. Yeah, we really got to, cause we have to wait to retake.
So, um, obviously you might edit it out, but like, I, um, I was friends with, uh, Natalie, and I saw, I don't know if you know, uh, if you remember who that is, um, I worked with her at the writing center, and so like she reposted, like, uh, I don't, I think it was like a link to one of your videos, I was like, Jeffrey.
Why, why Natalie? Why Natalie? She was accounting or no?
No, 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 not accounting.
Oh, then I probably know who you're talking about, short Natalie?
Yeah, um, I think so, but her, cause I, I saw her on Zoom only, so like,
Yeah.
Cause that's, that's like, we both worked there, but yeah, she, um, I think she's a biology major, if I remember her.
Okay, I think it was the same one, she just graduated last-
Yeah, Natalie Nash.
Yes, Natalie's my girl, I was like, I thought Natalie acted really big though.
Yeah, so like she, uh, that's, that's how I like know her, and she reposted something that you put, and I was like,
It's a small world. It really is.
Yeah, so.
It really is, and even like in the accounting, in the accounting world, in high school, it was very-
Yeah.
Okay guys, so as you can see, I made it back home, it's a little bit later, like six o'clock. But yeah, we had a good little study session, so now I'm about to head to the volleyball game. Now I'm supposed to be going with China, but as y'all can hear, China Malon is not answering. Yeah, she not answering, but I'm about to pull up on her, but yeah, so we about to head to the volleyball game real quick. And then when I come back, we're gonna get ready to film another video. So yeah, by the time this video go up though, that one would've been up by then. So yeah, make sure you guys check it out, but yeah, I'mma be vlogging my phone at the game, so I'mma just leave y'all here. I'mma leave y'all here chilling or whatever, but I'mma really hate y'all, if that makes sense. So yeah, let's head to the volleyball game.
Hold on, I'm gonna call it, can we like stop walking first?
Here, come right here.